Well, good evening. It is February 2nd and I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, symbol of the flag of the United States of America and the true republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We do have a published agenda. Is there any additions?
Would move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
There you go. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. And I'm not sure why we're having issues with our hot mic tonight, but maybe we can figure out that technical difficulties there. So first up on our approved agenda is a public comment. We did have three written public comments and we have had several people sign up. The first person who signed up is Kate from Comanche Middle School, but also know that we're doing a proclamation later. Where are you mean to speak today to?
Yeah, I didn't know that we should sign up for a public comment or if we should just wait.
Yeah, you have your own spot for, yes, great. Next up is Lise. For having technical difficulties with, we have this mic here, it's been acting up. There you go.
Hello? Okay, thank you.
Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay, my name is Elsie Sable. I'm a seventeen-year-old who lives here. The National Academy of Sciences in a worst-case scenario projects a sea level rise of seventy-eight inches by the year 2100, which would result in a loss of 690,000 square miles of land, displacing 2.5% of the world's population. As our climate changes rapidly, our farms won't be able to support the same crops or sustain the same level of production. By 2050, 500,000 people could die from food insecurity as a direct result of climate change. According to the World Health Organization, climate change is estimated to kill five million people between 2030 and 2050, and eighty-three million by the year 2100. When youth imagine our future, this is what we have to look forward to. In 2021, members of the Lacey City Council passed the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, the T-C-M-P, in response to the demands of many community members, ourselves included. We felt heard, we felt seen and understood, we thought that finally elected officials were taking action to protect our world. We were wrong. Passage of the T-C-M-P means nothing if you take no step toward implementation. Thus, we first demand that you draft and pass an implementation strategy. Second, Lacey is the only city in Thurston County which has not declared a climate emergency. It is your job and responsibility to, as public servants, to look around you and see the smoke. We are in a current crisis. Our final demand is that you start acting like it. Develop emergency procedures and free up emergency funds. Our government was not built to act with the urgency the climate crisis demands. You must enact urgent structural change, or the people you claim to serve will suffer for it. Continue with business as usual, and there will be blood on your hands.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it, and there's a lot that we are doing, but we will, we appreciate you giving me a public comment tonight. So next up is Lynn Petun.
I'm going to knock the microphone in the hope of not echoing.
Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
My name is Lynn Petun. About your tree ordinance and the redoing of the tree ordinance and.
Next up for a public comment is Mary Weber. Next up for a public comment is Mary Weber. Mary here?
Give me just a second.
Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
If I have extra time, can I give it to her, please? I did not write anything specific, I just wrote like key points. So I'm a parent of a BSU student. My daughter experienced some abuse and some harm and some trauma from her school administrators' Sorry. I get really upset when I think about it because I remember everything that they put them through. So my daughter experienced a lot of trauma along with many other brave young people. And we've gone to the school board and the superintendent, and nobody is doing anything. I understand that the city council does not have any authority over that system, but nothing is working. And I am asking that the city council and the leaders of this community stand by those students because they continue to receive harm and trauma, and it's not getting better. It's been a year. So I would just like to know if you can use your voices, because ours are tired, theirs are tired, and if you can use your positions however you can to stand by these young people because I think they deserve it. And I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. Next up is Amber Markland. Please introduce yourself and keep about three minutes.
Hi, my name's Amber. This week marks one year since the student strike to end racism and rape culture in the schools of this city. On the second day of Black History Month, in a city that has school leadership allowing parents to opt their children out of learning and celebrating Black Lives Matter Week in schools, I am here. I came here for you to listen to, I came here for you to listen to a voice you already know, graduating River Ridge High School in 2022 with highest honors, senior class president, student leader, and Black Student Union, currently a freshman at University of Washington, offered fellowships and excelling in her studies, recently admitted to a mental health hospital for thoughts of suicide, currently forming and leading community mental health groups, a beautiful, brilliant black woman, healing herself while helping others. She's been faced with the harsh realities of this world within this city, too young, that even when you fight for what's right, people in positions of power don't listen. She needed you to tell her that she mattered. I tell you all who she is so that you see the full impact of your choice, your actions on our children in this city when you don't do what great leaders are supposed to do. Holding other leaders in our community who are criminally negligent and following policies and protecting our children is your responsibility, it's our responsibility, it's my responsibility, it's not our children's responsibility. Hoping you hear, I'm going to play something on my phone, listen to the words written by my husband, use these words to inspire you to create a plan in our city so that there is never another child wondering if their life truly matters. A former Lacey U. City Council member and the voice of a true leader in this city, my daughter, Leila Markland. I don't know if you guys will be able to hear it.
Red and brown faces at the heart of the matter are determined to bring peace. We want to enjoy life instead of fighting and dying for it. We are more than a headline used to anger races and promote ratings. We are more than a centerpiece. Look, notice, acknowledge us with more than a wandering, piercing eye. See the beauty of uncomfortable truth. Look at the images surrounding you, memories of ageless, fearless youth. Our future will no longer be erased or removed. Our gifted souls transcend healing morals. Peaceful opposition does not happen often and may not happen again. Martin Luther King Jr. was praised and killed for this same offering. Pay attention. Collaborating to address hateful differences needs to become America's true great gift. It must be present, cherished, and accomplished during every generation. Respect, decency, and love are ingrained in our spiritual evolution. Destruction happens when you ignore and refuse this life-enhancing lesson. The protection of Black, minority, and indigenous lives does not mean or equal the destruction of whites. We all need each other to survive. Death is an impossible way to learn. Equality is a right earned at birth.
We have one more person who signed up, Katrina Hernandez. Can you please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes?
Hi, my name's Katrina Hernandez. Dear Lacey City Council, I came to you today.
I came to you today as a student from the North Hurston Public School District to let you know that there is a problem in your city. A year ago today was the third day of the student-led strike. North Hurston, against North Hurston Public Schools. We had a list of demands set to go back to classrooms and we found out that the policies and procedures we wanted were already in district policy. They were just not being followed. It took two weeks after negotiations after negotiations for students to feel safe enough to go back to the classroom. The district used life skills students against the students that were in the protest. They gave blatant lies and gave the students empty promises. It has been a year and there has been little to no change that has happened. I have personally students still don't feel safe. The district still hire people. Still hires people that crosses professional boundaries with students. I have personally gone to school board meetings, seeing them roll their eyes at even the mention of student safety. You'll see and hear the district preach and say that they care about students' safety, but it seems they only care about the physical safety. They don't realize the mental toll that can take place. Mental health is not something to take lightly. It seems they only care about the physical safety and not looking at the mental health factor. Putting students through trauma with racism and rape and not knowing which adult you can trust is traumatizing. It's exhausting not knowing who I can trust. Mental health can take a noticeable big toll on the body physically. Anxiety, fear, anger, depression, all show up in raised blood pressure. Inability to sleep, inability to concentrate and focus, stress, self-harm. Those are all the ways students feel mentally. Being a part of a district that does not care about the BIPOC students or educators, the LGBTQIA do not feel safe. Do we, the students and the BIPOC educators, not deserve to feel safe and not get this mental toll from their own school district? So I'm here today to tell you that this district has failed the students of your city. Speaking from a student that has failed. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Seeing none, I just want to say that it goes without saying that we can feel and hear the pain that you are suffering. And it's always our commitment as a city to be a place where everyone feels safe. And this council will continue to do what it can to make sure everyone is welcomed and has a place here in Lacey. And just keep it up. We have your back.
Mayor Ryder, this is Kelly Adams. We do have commenters online.
Okay.
I will let in the first person, Dave Hector.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me? It doesn't seem to be registering, my mic.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. I guess I'm just here as a concerned citizen and after hearing the speeches given by these young women here tonight and hearing your response, you know, the city council is doing what it can and I would just, I don't know if I'm allowed to have questions asked and answered here. But I would like to know what it can do because it sounds like promises have been made over the course of a year and nothing has changed. And it sounds like these students are demanding action and change and have already demanded action and change in the past. So when you say you want to do what you can, I would like to know what can you do? That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? To give a public comment?
Yes, Mayor. I'll promote the next person. I'm attempting to promote Ado Akitas, but that person needs to accept the panelist invite. So I will go to Bunchy Carter next.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
My name is Bunchy Carter. I'm a minister in the Center of Black Panther Party of Washington. We have been very heavily involved with the BSU for about a year now. Particularly from River Ridge. What I hear today, not much has changed in that year. We have made it a point to inform the public of exactly what's going on in Thurston County and what they can do to help be a part of the solution. I hear a lot out of talking about a lot of things. I hear a lot of children who are afraid to go to class. I hear children who don't feel physically safe despite the fact one of the students saying that's all y'all seem to care about. As if the mental aspect doesn't matter. Well, I feel like any child who's too afraid to go to school or too afraid to go talk to a teacher or too afraid to stand up for what it is that they believe because they know that they will be beat down, bullied, and harassed by the people who are supposed to protect them, those all sound like acts of war. Someone please explain to me what kind of school district takes the opportunity in the midst of supposed to be educators to declare war on the children they're educating? Safety is important. Every aspect of safety is important. And the most important thing you could do as educators, as city council members, as county council members, or whoever you may be in your positions of power is stop lying to yourselves and lying to the people. Either stand up for these children or stand down and let people who really have their best interests at heart do the work. All power to the people.
Thank you. Kelly, can you bring in the next?
The next person is in transit here. It's LaScencia Immortalis.
Go ahead. Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is LaScencia Immortalis and I'm the National Chief of Staff of the Panther Party. I am making a public comment today because we have been supporting students in your, in the North Hurston School District for about a year now. What I want, what we're asking is we want you to actually listen to their voices, actually listen to what they're saying. They don't feel safe. They don't, you know, there's no place for them to go to school. They don't have a safe space. You've already taken the doors off the bathrooms? I mean, it is not that difficult to provide a safe space for children at school. I also, we also that you do an investigation within the school district because there are teachers and staff and district staff that are a part, they're a main part of this problem. They're gaslighting students. They're not taking assault reports. They are suspending students. One student was suspended and he wasn't even able to go back to school. I mean, I don't, because he was an activist. Like, just because he wanted his voice heard does not mean that you just kick him out of the school district. These students are the future and I know that that's just like a, that is a fact. And if you don't listen to them now, when are you going to listen to them? They, students' lives matter. And they do not deserve, I mean, they deserve to go to a school that's going to protect them, that's going to offer them services to support them, to get their education and to be able to have everything that they need to succeed in life. That is your job. They are paying you to protect them. So please, listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All power to the people.
Thank you for your comments. Kelly, do we have anyone else?
We're going to try Ado one more time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had to restart my phone.
That's all right.
Can you guys hear me off that?
Yep, please introduce yourself and have about three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Ado Akatoss. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I'm here today to talk about why I shouldn't have to be here today. I have met Leila in person. The light that that girl offers to this earth is brighter than you could possibly understand. I have met Katrina in person and I have seen her smile light up a room and today she was in tears. Now, I know that this is directed at the school board. So I'm going to try and reserve some of my frustrations. But the thing is, I heard you guys say, "Keep fighting." We hear you. You might be listening, but I don't think you're hearing. These kids are going through hell. These kids have been fighting for a year just to survive, just to be comfortable in a place where they are supposed to be able to learn and thrive. And instead, they are being tortured every day. The school system has already shown that they are not going to take care of this situation. It is time for you to step in. It is time for you to rectify the situation. I'm tired of hearing about limited powers. Partner with who you have to partner with. Fight who you have to fight because this is not their fight. This is not a fight that they should have to fight. They should be worried about education, about growth, about life, and about showing what they can be in this world. Not about how they survive in this world. Be there for them. And until then, they will have the full support of the Panther Parties of Washington. If you want us gone, then you step up. Until then, they got us. All power to the people.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Kelly?
That is the last of our public comments for online. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in this chamber wishing to address the council? Please.
I'm sorry you didn't sign up.
That's right.
My name is Pamela. I am Katrina Hernandez's mom. Being there, a part of the student-led protest against the school and the district. It was, it was hard to see it. It was hard to see how the school wasn't even protecting these children. There was, you know, threats against them and they weren't protecting them. They were protecting the students and the school. They were still their students. My daughter spoke of broken promises, nothing being really taken care of. She didn't want to talk about her personal experience, but it needs to be heard and said. The administrator, assistant principal, put her hands on my child and shoved her. But because the camera couldn't see it, the officer on duty said, "I'm not taking it anywhere. I'm not taking it further." Wouldn't take student statements, adult statements that had to put herself in the middle between that assistant principal to push her away from, not push her away, I'm sorry, remove her from putting her hands on my child. Nothing was done. Countless meetings with, I don't even remember his name right now because I'm upset and I wasn't prepared for this. Oh, HR should be reaching out to you. They know what's going on, but there's so much going on with the protests. You should know that, right? Yeah, I've been there protecting, donating money for the kids to have food and be warm because they weren't giving them a space. They were still their students and they didn't help. Nothing was done. My daughter called HR to see if we could set up a schedule. They said, "We don't know what you're talking about." Never called us. A year later, nothing. I had to transfer her to another school because she could not function in the classroom or the hallways because they said, "If you see her, she has to go the other way. You have to go the other way." That shouldn't be a student's issue at school. So we transferred her schools. It's, you know, she's in running start, so she doesn't have to be in the school atmosphere because she doesn't want to be there. And that's not what our youth should be with. So yes, I feel like the police system failed me because they told me they weren't going to take it anywhere. So I didn't get a lawyer. I didn't get a restraining order because I said, "How are they going to protect my child?" I can't even protect her. So I let it go. And I shouldn't have. But I'm here asking you guys, "Step in for these kids." Thank you.
Thank you. Of course.
I need just one second to find something on my phone. I wasn't going to speak tonight. My name's Stephanie Scott and I am a parent in the district. And I am sharing this with Kat's permission. I have no words to share. But I am the adult ally who did not see that assistant principal shove Kat. But I am the one that was across the way trying to keep kids safe because we feared kids would die at that protest. And I had been watching that administrator all week. I had seen how they interacted with students. And I looked over and I saw Kat's eyes with fear. And I'm going to show you this. And I am showing this with permission and I'm showing this to you, Mayor Ryder. I'm going to rewind it and I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to share this. You're seeing a principal towering over a young student with small stature, shaking her finger at her, yelling in her face after she tried to physically move her. The fear on Kat's face propelled me across that space to position myself between Kat and that administrator. These students need you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? And this public comment period is over. And this public comment period is over. I know several parents have reached out to me, and I just want to let them know that I'm here for a conversation and strategize next steps, and I'm here to support your kids. And with that, we're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is under proclamations. Proclamation against Warner, FBLA. We'll start with Councilmember Vazquez.
Whereas, future Business Leaders of America Incorporated, FBLA, is a nonprofit educational organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee in 1942, and Iowa became the first state chapter in 1947, and?
Whereas, FBLA currently includes more than 250,000 members and advisors in 4,600 chapters nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools, and?
Whereas, FBLA is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through innovative leadership and career development programs, and?
Whereas, FBLA members perform community service activities and strive to build student understanding of the realities of modern business world, and?
Whereas, FBLA teaches middle school, high school, and college students basic business and leadership principles, and assists them in the transition from school to work, and?
Whereas, North Thurston Public Schools has six active FBLA chapters with over 250 members, and whereas Kamachan Middle School officially chartered its FBLA local chapter on October 9, 2018, and?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim February 5 to February 11, 2023, as Future Business Leaders of America Week in the City of Lacey, and I urge all community members to support and encourage the future entrepreneurs and business leaders of our community and in the United States. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this day.
And you, FBLA folks come up? I got this text from Spencer just a couple of weeks ago, and said, "Hey, I want to know if I could come to City Hall and talk about FBLA. Maybe we can do a video together." I didn't realize it was this Spencer. It just showed up in my phone as Spencer, and it's like, "How many Spencers do I know?" And I'm thought, "Well, you know, it'd be better if we did this proclamation." Much later, I found out, it's like, "Wait a minute, which Spencer? What Spencer are you?" And it's this young man here. And so, first of all, thank you for reaching out to me and getting this started, and I'm proud of you. You know how proud I am of you as a young man, but I'm even more proud that you requested this and you're here today.
We requested this for our goose chasing. That's a national FBLA program. It's an app. All right, which is an app where we do like certain challenges that give us points, and I believe we took first place in the nation, and this was our last challenge to do. And I thought it was perfect that it was to get a proclamation from someone, so my mind immediately went to Andy to do it. And so, I texted him, and what he said, that's what happened. And now, here we did, we worked it out. We, we signed a proclamation application, and it worked. And we have our lovely officer and some of our exec team here. If they'd like to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I'm on the exec team.
Hi, my name is Salifa. I'm the president.
Hi, my name is Deja Lynn. I'm the events manager.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I'm the public relations officer.
Hello, my name is Marcus. I am the parliamentarian.
Hello, my name is Tiffany. I am the chapter treasurer.
And I'm inspired by all these folks next to me, but I'm the advisor, Kate Reese. So, we have a huge week next week of trying to get our 77 members in our school involved in FBLA, and these folks do all the work. Don't let them, they'll tell you, "I don't do it for them." They do it all. And so much so that when they come into my room and I say, "Salifa," she turns and goes, "Yes," because she knows that there's something coming. But they did this all themselves, and thanks, Spencer, for pulling this together. And everyone who wrote the proclamation, we do appreciate you all. So, team effort.
If you come by here, we'd like to shake your hand.
Great. So, watch for Instagram. We're at KMS underscore FBLA on Instagram, and we'll document everything all week long, so all the stuff we're doing.
Of course. So, how many business owners do we have in the community?
We've been trying to get the council meeting to see.
So, next up on our agenda is the city manager's report. Oh, wait, do we have ordinance versions? Oh, first, first up is our ordinance, ordinance 1635, the construction compost procurement.
Ordinance 1635, which is the compost procurement policy for the public capital projects. It is what we discussed last week at the work session. It is related to House Bill 1799, which was passed last year in an effort to reduce organic materials from entering the landfill. And under Part VII of that bill, it stated that the City of Lacey needs to adopt an ordinance, and that, and this is what that ordinance does. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1635 compost procurement policy for public capital projects.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Just one comment. I said this at the work session. I've said this on other issues that we've had before us. It is infuriating to me that the state mandates that we pass an ordinance. Basically, we're being told by the state to vote on something that we have no option on how to vote on. That's not a vote. That's the Soviet Union. That's not America, where they tell us how we must vote on something, and that's what this is, and it infuriates me, and because of that, I will abstain.
Any other comments? I kind of feel you on this one. I, I kind of feel like the state, if the state's going to pass something that requires the cities to do it, then they should just pass it and require the system to do it, but?
They did the exact same thing on the building code.
Yeah, this is state law, and we have to be compliant with state law, so I will be voting for it. Is there any other discussion?
So, this is more of an acknowledgement than a vote.
Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Oh, two absumptions. That's, that's fine, or it still passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Today for our city manager report, we will have a, an update on our federal legislative agenda, and I'd like to introduce Joel Rubin of CFM Advocates, who's working back east for us on our behalf, and I believe Joel will be joining us virtually.
There he is.
Hey.
Hey, buddy.
How are you doing? Good evening, everyone.
Yep, I can see us.
I was going to share my screen, but before I do, I just wanted to thank everyone for allowing me this opportunity to present to the city and provide an update on some of your federal accomplishments back here in Washington, DC. We've had a really nice run, and it's nice to take an opportunity to look back at some of the successes from the last year, and also look forward a little bit to what we're going to be doing in Washington, DC, together with your congressional delegation moving forward. So, with that, I was hoping to share my screen, if that's okay? And I'll turn this into a slideshow. And hopefully, everyone can see that. Mayor Ryder, can you see the?
Yep, I can, I can see it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the offer to let me present tonight and for all your leadership at the local level, but also, obviously, back here in Washington, DC. You've been really instrumental in helping the city have a significant presence at the federal level, not only working with us on your local projects, but with National League of Cities and your many roles there. So, I really appreciate it, and thanks to the council, interim city manager, and Shannon for all the great work to get us to where we are today. I'm going to try to move my slideshow here. So, the main purpose of tonight's presentation, and I'm going to keep this short because you know a lot of this already, and we've already made a presentation in November about your federal agenda for 2023. So, we'll touch on that a little bit, but we did have some recent successes at the end of 2022 that we wanted to highlight and make sure that everyone was aware of the great work that the city's been doing, the congressional delegation, Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Congresswoman Strickland has been doing on the city's behalf and the entire state and region's behalf, and provide an update, see if there's any questions moving forward. So, with that, some of the recent successes, the city was able to secure in December a million-dollar Congressional Directed Spending Award from Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray for the Makerspace Expansion Project, one of the more exciting projects that are happening in the city in terms of innovation and really building on a culture of entrepreneurship that you all have been working on for years. The Makerspace is obviously taking hold with the congressional delegation in terms of the value and the benefits and the excitement around entrepreneurship and leadership and the local workforce development opportunities that all come. So, a million dollars that was secured. These are some pictures on the left side of Senator Murray's recent visit to the Makerspace, and we were just really happy to see that she was able to come and see what you all do on a day-to-day basis in working with your local leaders. In addition to that, we were really excited just this week. We were excited to see that the Safe Streets for All Planning Grant that the city had submitted in September of 2022 was just awarded for $68,000, and this will allow you all, as a city, to do some additional planning to make sure that you reduce your fatalities, your severe crashes in the city, to put together a plan. And yes, that's good, but the best part about it is this is a brand-new program, and the bipartisan infrastructure package that will allow you, once your plan has been approved, allow you to tap into about a billion dollars a year in implementation grants that you can put towards College Street or some of the other safety corridors that need additional improvements for bike, ped, road improvements throughout the community. So, this planning grant will open up some other opportunities this year, next year, moving forward through the life of the infrastructure package through 2025. And so, we were really excited to see that award come through. I think it was just two days ago. On the policy side in 2022, we were glad to see that the Inflation Reduction Act, which really does a lot with climate and climate change provisions, climate change incentives, grant programs, tax rebates, tax credits, there's a lot of opportunities for the City of Lacey, who's joined with Thurston County on your climate action plan. There's going to be a number of opportunities through the Environmental Protection Agency, through HUD, and through Department of Energy to take advantage of some grant programs that can go towards climate change measures to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions in Thurston County. So, we're going to be keeping a close eye on those programs as they open up in 2023, and so, to look, to take advantage of those community projects. In addition, in 2022, Congresswoman Strickland, along with Senator Murray and Cantwell, were able to include something that we've been working on collectively for quite a long time. Congressman Heck, former Congressman Heck, actually started this initiative many years ago to get the Puget Sound SOS Act actually passed. Congressman Heck introduced this, I think it was five, six years ago, but the real main benefit for the City of Lacey is some of the septic-to-sewer conversion projects, which are expensive, especially for the homeowners, to convert from their septic systems to the city utility. You know, there's a conversion cost there. There's the city infrastructure cost to upgrade those systems. The Puget Sound SOS Act will allow the Environmental Protection Agency to set up a desk, basically, in your back, in your neck of the woods, to look at the problems associated with these sewer systems and to provide resources moving forward to make those connections happen and offset some of the costs to the homeowners, offset some of the costs to the city. So, that passed through the National Defense Authorization Act in December, and that's going to provide some additional opportunities there. So, we're really pleased to see that as well. It's a long-term goal of the city. Congressman, former Congressman Heck, Congresswoman Strickland led that, and Senators Murray and Cantwell, obviously, as well. Just a reminder, 2021, able to secure some community funding through the congressionally-directed spending program for the Veterans Hub. We got an EDA, we were able to secure an EDA grant for your Makerspace of a million dollars to continue with the equipment improvement. We were able to work together on the ARPA bill, which provided $6.8 million in direct funding to the City of Lacey to address some of the COVID response, relief, and preparedness projects and programs that you all are working on. And then the bipartisan infrastructure law, we've been working on infrastructure for a long time back here in Washington, DC, and you all, as the City of Lacey, have been advocating for that. You have a number of infrastructure projects locally, but also regionally with the I-5, and then Esqualay Bridge. The infrastructure law will provide federal funding opportunities to move those projects forward. And at the end of this, I just want to say, happy to answer any questions. One, a quick Capitol Hill update. Obviously, there's a change in- Quick Capitol Hill update, obviously, there's a change in the balance of power back here in Washington, DC. The House of Representatives switched from the Democratic rule to Republican rule. Speaker McCarthy, on his 15th round, which is unprecedented and historic in terms of a speaker being nominated and elected speakership, it took him 15 votes to become speaker. Ultimately, he secured a speakership, but he did give away a lot of power to various factions within his party, and it will be very interesting to see how Speaker McCarthy navigates the very precarious DC waters as legislation needs to move forward in the House of Representatives. For Washington State, it is really unprecedented in terms of the seniority and the power that some of your members of Congress and the delegation have. Senator Murray is now the chairwoman of the Appropriations Committee. I would say that is the most powerful committee in Washington, DC today, with all of the various funding that's happening through defense, non-defense. The Appropriations Committee is really making a lot of decisions, and with community-directed spending, which formerly known as earmarks, are brought back into the fold, Senator Murray's going to have her fair share of influence how federal dollars are spent in Washington State and throughout the country. So very excited about that. She's also the Senate Pro Tem, which means she is third in line to the President of the United States, and it comes with a lot of perks to the job and a nice office space in the Capitol. And Senator Murray has been in Congress since 1992, and her seniority and her talent and her way, teamwork is paid off in terms of the Appropriation Chair and Speaker Pro Tem. Senator Cantwell, like I said, the Washington delegation is doing really well, is the Chair of the Commerce Committee, she continues to be the chairwoman. Congresswoman Strickland remains on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee and Armed Services, and also of note, Congressman Larson was just appointed the lead Democrat on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, taking over for former Chairman Defazio from Oregon. So on the transportation side, which is really important to the state of Washington, you have a great leader in Congressman Larson. Some of the things we're looking at in terms of the current Congress and what they're going to be dealing with for the next six to 12 months, you all have probably already heard about the debt ceiling and the debt ceiling potential crisis. We've already hit our debt ceiling, we're at about $35 trillion, and it's a lot of money that we're dealing with in debt, but we ultimately need to increase, basically, the United States has a credit card limit, just like I give to my 17-year-old daughter, she has a credit card limit, which is much smaller than the countries, not $35 trillion, but the country, the Congress, needs to raise that debt limit from $35 trillion to pay for all of the appropriations bills that have actually been approved over the last couple of years. And the House Republicans are trying to use this as an opportunity to reduce federal spending. And the Biden administration is going to be working with Republicans either on the debt ceiling negotiations, or separately, Biden administration doesn't consider this a negotiation over the debt ceiling, although they seem to be interested in potentially working with House Republicans to look at ways to reduce spending. It's going to be a big deal come June, July, with this debt ceiling, because just like 2011, we came to kind of a brinkmanship between Republicans, Democrats, former President Obama at the time, House Republicans forced kind of a showdown over the debt ceiling, and for a period of time, it reduced our credit rating at the federal level, and for the first time in our history. So there's a bit of brinkmanship here, and we're hoping that everyone can get this resolved before we come to any significant repercussions for the country in terms of our debt. Republicans are also very interested in looking at ways to cut budget deficits, cut federal spending in the FY24 appropriations bills, that's what we're working on this year. As we go into FY24, one of the concessions that Speaker McCarthy made, and maybe it was, I don't know if you see it as a concession or not, but he's agreed to work to set the spending caps at the 2022 funding levels, that's one of the things that they're going into this FY24 appropriations process. Typically, back here in Washington, DC, there's a, you had FY23 spending that happened last year, and there's like a 3% or 4% increase that you kind of work off of, and the Republican House members want to start at the FY22 level rather than FY23. So that's one of the things that they're going to be discussing back here. And a lot of investigations, GOP congressional oversight on the House side, investigations, and looking at the Biden administration, and some of the things that they've been doing the last couple of years, I think the Republicans are very interested in looking more and providing more scrutiny there. So we'll be keeping an eye on all of these interesting taglines over the next six to 12 months. I'm not going to talk too much about this, because we already talked through your projects in November, but these are your project priorities and then your policy priorities. So you have some infrastructure projects when it comes to College Street, your Ops Center, your septic-to-sewer conversion, and then you set some policy priorities, talking about I-5 housing, supporting the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, the CDBG and the COPS program, again, that's housing and law enforcement, if you need to add additional opportunities for addressing some of the homelessness issues, and then also some concerns about the Build America, Buy America program, which is sometimes difficult to navigate when it comes to some infrastructure projects. So don't want to get too much into the weeds here, but this is what Mayor Ryder is going to be coming back to Washington, DC, to talk about focusing on your projects and your policy agenda items. So with that, I will end, I'll stop sharing my screen, and just, again, wanted to say thank you all very much for giving me this opportunity to speak. You all have been doing an amazing job back here in Washington, DC. You continue to have a great reputation in terms of putting projects forward that are meaningful, that are consistent with your values and the values of your congressional delegation, the federal government, and delivering those projects on time and on budget, and it's just been great to see that and great to see Mayor Ryder and his leadership through National League of Cities elevate the city's goals on a national level as well. So with that, I don't know if there was any questions or happy to take those or any comments.
Are there any questions for Joel? It's hard to believe, I've been coming back there for 12 years, Joel. We've been meeting for 12 years, going and talking to our federal delegation, it's, I don't know where time has gone. I guess the, I guess the one question I have is, obviously, if you were even paying attention tonight, there's this urgency about climate change in our area across the United States, and in particular, in the bipartisan, or the deficit reduction, right?
Inflation Reduction.
Reduction Act, there's a ton of dollars in there, grant dollars in there. You know, I've been paying attention to this legislation specifically because of that. However, there seems to be, first of all, we're not 100% sure how to access all those dollars, right? The program still needs to be rolled out, but it seems like there's a disconnect between, okay, here's a great program, and then how does your average citizen take advantage of this program? Is there going to be some resources, say, the city of Lacey is going to be able to tap into to get like a coordinator to figure out what's within the bill? You know what I'm saying? Because it's not going to do us any good if there's all this money out there and we don't know how to access it.
Yeah, that's a good point. So we've put together, this is a big bill, there's a lot of resources, there's, like, there's grants, like you mentioned, there's tax credits, there's tax rebates, there's a number of different opportunities through this program, and it's complicated. Even as a federal lobbyist dealing with a lot of these federal programs, this is going to be one of the more complicated rollouts in recent memory. We've already put together a 17-page, which is a lot, summary for the city to reevaluate in terms of all the programs that are going to come out. But I think you make a good point, that we can also take a different angle, a different look through it, through a different lens, to provide, to provide the city a really a sense of what, how your community, how your residents can take advantage of it on an individual basis, but also your businesses as well. So I think that's a good point. We don't know all the details yet. We have basically the broad outlines of the legislation that has been passed, and that's kind of what that 17-page document is, looking at those, like 40 different programs that are in there. And we've been looking through the city, the city lens, the EPA, the Department of Energy, and those are the two primary agencies that are going to be rolling out these programs. So as they roll them out, we'll have more specifics on, and the IRS, because there's going to be tax credits, how they're going to be, how you could utilize those programs. But I think your question is a really good one. We also need to be thinking about your residents and how they can be taking advantage of it too, so you can market that or publicize that to make sure the folks understand it and can take advantage of it locally. And that, we're still not there yet, there's, the agencies are still working on the specifics, but those will be rolled out in the first half of 2023, a lot of the programs, it might take the rest of the year for the other programs to roll out, and we'll keep that in mind, and let's have a discussion about how we can get you the information that is most helpful for you and your, in your community.
Sounds good. Anything else from Joel? Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Joel, for all you've done for the city of Lacey and for Washington, and I'll see you in DC.
Sounds good. See you soon. Thanks, everybody.
Yep. Anything else from the City Manager Report?
Nothing else.
Then next up is boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
Just one quick report, the Thurston County EDC met on January 25th, and our main subject was the, there's a 745 parcel property down in Maytown that is currently owned by the Port of Tacoma. They are wanting to, you know, change the zoning on the property before they, before they get rid of the property, which will ensure that it kind of stays the way it is. It's mainly a gravel pit, but it does have some, some areas that can, that fall into protected areas, and the zoning right now is R1, so that's one for 20, and the proposed zoning will be rural industrial, which should somewhat preserve the integrity of the property. It has rail lines, and so it would make an ideal place for maybe some packaging factories or those types of things, maybe not as significant an impact on the city of Lacey itself, but that was pretty much what our meeting was about, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Okay. Reporting on the January 25th meeting of the Regional Housing Council, we had a good discussion on a Southport financial proposal to build low-income housing in Olympia, it's a 162-unit project. There, it isn't resolved yet, because there were concerns about, you know, jumping one project beyond some of the others that were lined up for financing, but I think we probably have come to a resolution that's going to allow loans to that organization to happen so that it can be built while still honoring the integrity of the Regional Housing Council's process for distributing state and federal funds. So there's that movement. We worked on funding priorities for the requests for proposals that are going to be going out in February for federal and state grants, and so we identified, you know, the types of things that we'd like to see funded, a scoring system, criteria, that sort of thing, so that we're prepared in February to launch that, and then by, I think it's May, we'll be making some decisions on that. We talked about the Regional Housing Council inner-local agreement being updated, that's going to come back to our council here before long, and we had a conversation about it last week at our work session. Progress is being made on two advisory boards that are being created to support the Regional Housing Council. One is for affordable housing, and the other is for homeless services, and both of these bodies will be advising the Housing Council on the distribution of the funding that comes into Thurston County for housing and homeless issues. We talked about the point-in-time count, which happened, just happened in the past week. This is a census of the homeless population in Thurston County. It's not perfect, but they try to find as many people as they can for that. And lastly, I was elected Chair again, so I'll start my second year as Chair of the Housing Council. Commiserations accepted, too. And then the Climate Action Steering Committee had its retreat on January 23rd, and like the RHC, it's evolving, and so we're looking at a number of changes there. One that is the most dramatic is it's going to put the elected members of this, of the council in more of an oversight role, meeting less frequently, and putting more of the, moving things along in the hands of our multi-jurisdictional staff, as well as citizen advisory committees. So we still have to work out the details, and there will be an inter-local agreement that will come to our council, as well as the other jurisdictions that participate in this, to be approved. An example of how this will change the elected part of this is that there will only be two standing tasks, oversight and coordination, so monitoring our progress and reducing carbon emissions, and, you know, how these things are working and what we need to tweak. So I need to let our city attorney know that there will be an ordinance coming, and the council, it will be, once Dave gets through with it, it'll be coming to us for action. That's my report.
Thank you. Obviously, reported out on the exciting new affordable housing project that everyone's been very supportive. I was just, one of my employees reached out to me just yesterday and said, you know, what are you doing for more affordable housing in this community? Specifically, she's in a Copperwood, which is off of Martin Way, and that has been, they've accepted vouchers and some other things there, and she notified that that company just sold to another company, and now it's no longer going to be accepting vouchers or anything else, and so there's something like 300 units there, that are no longer going to be affordable within our community, and so we're going the wrong direction when it comes to affordable housing in this community. And, you know, I think it just goes to show you, there's so many different moving parts, and especially on the private sector side, if we're not aware what's out there and who's providing affordable housing, and how we can protect that affordable housing, then we're fighting a losing battle. So it's something for, I think, for us to keep in mind, especially at the Regional Housing Council, on how we can get more affordable housing in our community. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick report, TCOM 911 met yesterday. Main topic of conversation was an update on the radio project, which unfortunately is being delayed due to some supply chain issues, as well as permitting issues, particularly on our DuPont site for one of the radio towers. It is looking now like it's probably not going to cut over until mid-2024, rather than the first quarter of '24, and depending on what happens with some of the issues with some of the supply chain stuff, it may even go longer than that, so we're going to have to wait and see. But at this point, they have completed almost all of the subscriber equipment installation for both police and fire. There's only one department left to do, which is, I think, I'm actually not sure which one, I think it's Bald Hills, but they have run into a few problems, most things have gone fairly smooth. They did actually run into a problem where they got caught one of the fire trucks on fire in the, during the installation, some electrical issues, that fire truck is no longer usable, and so. It was a truck that had not been put in service yet, it was actually a brand-new fire truck, so that's going through some insurance issues, and the company that was doing the install will be responsible for all of that. But also have started But, um, also have started on the process for hiring a new director, a deputy director. The, um, current deputy director has left, so we are in the process of finding a replacement. We are having several new employee academies going this year. One's underway right now. We are still short by 12 people at TCOM for, that's the radio dispatchers, the people that answer your 911 calls. So if anyone's looking for new career, new job, they should check out the TCOM website. Um, you know, it's, there's a lot of good benefits to the job, but we are short by 12 positions right now. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Community Action Council met on the 25th. Um, we had a, our audit, uh, annual audit, um, but, uh, was completed and, and, um, uh, I just wanted to read some of the notes that the auditors made. And so this is their words. We noted no matters related to the group audit that were, that we considered to be significant to the responsibilities of those charged with the governance of the group, meaning the CAC. Um, no new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies, uh, were not changed during 2021. They noted no transactions entered by, into by the entity during the year for which there's a lack of authority, authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. The audits of the group financial statements, uh, they noted no matters related to the group audit that were considered to be significant to the responsibilities of those charged with the governance of the group. Uh, content and, um, methods of preparing the schedule comply with the requirements of the uniform guidance. So, um, us, everybody on the board of the CAC take, um, especially financial matters very seriously, our reputation, um, everything. And this again improves for the last 40 years and still to, to today, that, um, everything we do, especially financial wise, is responsible and, um, transparent. And that's what I wanted to report on that because I think it's significant. And then, um, last week, let's see, the 20, excuse me, the, the 19th Law and Justice Council meeting met. I was on vacation, but, uh, Chief has kindly, uh, agreed to, to touch on a couple bases here. I'm just, uh, he was going to give a brief, uh, update on the APPR and then some legislative bills to watch. Thanks, Chief.
So good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, yes, Law and Justice met on the 19th. They had a packed agenda for 90 minutes and I'll try to be brief. Uh, APPR is the Advancing Pretrial Policy Research Initiative, which has been underway for better part of three years, which is really to find a more equitable way to handle pretrial detainees and try to meet the goal of maximizing freedom pretrial for people not convicted of crimes. Uh, the mechanism for doing that, there's risk assessment tools, uh, pretrial, uh, pretrial release conditions, things like that. Uh, I've been part of that initiative for quite a while, trying to find more equity for folks, uh, and also to ensure there's an accountability mechanism for those that violate pretrial conditions, to make sure they're back in front of, uh, the judges, to make sure they get back into compliance. So there was a, basically that rundown was just given in the course of 20 minutes, what I just gave you in 90 seconds. Uh, then later on, we talked about, uh, legislative bills that are being watched, uh, three main areas. Uh, one obviously pursuits, which we've discussed, uh, trying to return back to the reasonable suspicion standard and to operationalize pursuits so they can actually be conducted in a safe and proper manner. Uh, secondly, uh, we'd like to take a look at the juvenile law related to detentions. Uh, currently there's some unintended consequences, the way that current juvenile law is written and causes more juveniles to be detained than less, which is not the purpose of that initiative, but that's the operational result, unfortunately. And, uh, so there's some, some angst about that, so we're trying to get that addressed. And then thirdly, uh, there's some funding initiatives for police officers, um, a couple different bills address that and so we're looking at those as well. Uh, Law and Justice Day is next Tuesday. I'll be at the Capitol along with other law enforcement executives to talk about those bills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I couldn't have said it better myself.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all you do. Um, next up is Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. So we only have one report for, uh, Solid Waste. We met yesterday, uh, did a final review and approval for our 2023 work plan. And we also hear, we also held chair elections for the board. Renee Sinclair was nominated and reelected again and, uh, somehow she roped me in to be in the vice chair, so that'll be an interesting, uh, thing there. Uh, some of the highlights of the meeting, there is a solar development proposal, uh, currently to partner with Puget Sound Energy to utilize the 20-plus acres of the work property for solar panels and a battery, battery energy storage system. Uh, the county commissioners are directing this plan to explore a lease agreement with Puget Sound Energy to potentially utilize the east end of the work for this purpose. We also discussed the current county regulation for SWAC board members with the upcoming change in new commissioner seats. Uh, current regulation establishes up to 15 board members, including a member or designee for each county commissioner. And our board discussed different options for change, but we have made no official decision on the, uh, matrix of the, of the board. And that is my only report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
One quick report on, um, intercity transit. We met last night and we got an update on the progression of the Patterson project. So, um, intercity transit has been building their new headquarters building, their new facilities on that Patterson Street lot. And they have the south partial portion of the project that is still, uh, in the offing. And so we awarded the contract last night. And so for the next two and a half years or so, they're going to be building the second half of that facility, that site. And then at the end, it's going to be really nice. But in the meantime, there's going to be a lot of disruption to the parking and they're going to have to shuffle some functions around on the Patterson site. So if you've been into the headquarters building, it's beautiful, but they still need to build a lot of the facilities, like the Wash facility and, yeah. So we awarded that project and it's, there's going to be a continued partnership with the developer and the builders who built the first half of the site. So they've got all the players that are already familiar and they know what the project is. And so there's a continuity there that is beneficial. We also welcomed a lot of new staff and got an update on the Martin Way Park and Ride improvements, which continue positively and very excited because that's going to benefit Lacey residents in the future. Um, also wanted to share, um, because Carolyn mentioned the point in time count, that I had the opportunity to go and participate in the point in time count. I went to the Sergio's Place on the Friday, the 27th, when they were doing surveys of the homeless community and was, um, one of the folks that coordinated volunteers, helped do setup and then actually did the surveys with homeless folks. And it was a really fantastic event. You know, we provided tarps and flashlights, warm clothes, hot coffee and a meal to people. There was volunteers there that were providing free haircuts. There were a lot of different service providers that were providing access and connections to services in the community. And, you know, there was pizza and drinks and it was really nice and it was a warm, lovely space. I invite you to check out Sergio's Place. Um, it's pretty close to, oh, it's on Martin Way near the nail salon and the, uh, the lumberyard there. And I had a chance to talk to some of the homeless folks that came to the event, right? I was delivering the surveys, but I talked to folks who were homeless for, in some cases, a really long time, who were homeless for a thousand different reasons, right? They've had all kinds of things happen in their lives. But I was administering surveys and one of the questions was what would help you, right? What would improve your life? And of course, all of them said that access to shelter and affordable housing would change their life. So I think it's just worth commenting that I'm encouraged by our progress in cross-jurisdictional partnership and we need to continue to move with urgency to establish more affordable housing. We've got to move it in the other direction, right? We need there to be more shelter and more affordable housing in our community to help vulnerable people.
Is that it with your report? Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Um, I appreciate, uh, this council as always, this was a, uh, emotional, uh, council meeting with public comment and I, I don't want to go, that to be left unsaid, that, um, there's a lot of people out there that, who are hurting and not sure what to do next and they're scared and they're looking to this council for direction. Um, and it obviously is always difficult as a council member, um, to get involved in another jurisdiction's, um, authority, right? Uh, and, and so, uh, what I continue to tell, um, parents, um, people who've called me is, um, this entire city council is always open to, to hear the public, right? One thing that we can do is, is listen. Um, the other thing we can do is, is try to, uh, form partnerships and, and, and get to, um, solutions. And so, um, I think this council's made a, a, a valiant effort when it comes to having Lacey be a more, uh, equitable place, uh, for our community. Um, on top of the leadership that we've shown with our youth council, um, and our commission on equity and that, uh, work will continue. Um, we obviously have a, a long ways to go, but that work continues. I also want to, um, mention that, uh, you know, there's been some other, um, it's been in the, been around that, uh, there's some, um, unease with some decisions around Lake Fair and, uh, the city of Olympia, um, had talked about, um, putting a hold on their LTAC dollars. I, I reached out, um, to Olympia and said it, you know, it doesn't make sense for Olympia to be making, uh, a decision when it, uh, when it comes to LTAC funding, when there's other jurisdictions that are involved in that exact same funding. Um, and so it makes sense that we're, if we're all on the same page. And so I've, I've talked to the deputy mayor about this, who's the Chair of our LTAC committee and our, our, um, interim city manager and requested that, um, if the city of Olympia and meets with Lake Fair, that the other LTAC funders, um, including the city of Lacey is there to, um, have a path forward. So, um, sometimes you don't hear what's going on, uh, behind the scenes. Um, and maybe we need to do better about, about talking about the things that we do and that we care and that we're trying to come up with solutions regionally. Um, but I just wanted to, for the record, let that be known as well. And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.